What they're doing. Okay, it's coming. Sorry, guys. Think it's on?
No, it's on.
Okay, great. My bar is still good. Wait, I just have to make sure my, it's muted, right?
Yeah, just make sure your browser might hold up a little now.
Okay, mine's muted. It's muted. You can still hear me on YouTube, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. We'll go back to Zoom. Okay. I don't remember what else I was going to talk about. Okay, so I'm just going to go through the folders. So we've got the Beacon Reply, which is great. We have Saturday, June 12th, the CAC is having another event, and this one, they're gonna have a man talking about invasive species, you know, that are threatening the whole town and all over. Only he's and, and yeah, and a bunch of others, but he's coming here. And whoever comes to this event, which starts at 4:00 PM, he's gonna walk through the park with a group. And they're not, they're thinking maybe 15 people will come. But he's gonna walk through the park and start pointing out what the invasive species are in our own park and why we want to, why we should think about eradicating them and planting native species. And I think one thing I learned from that speaker last week is it's all about, it's all about the cycle of life for the birds and for all the animals and everything, because if they're, if the, if we're not, we don't have native, native species here. They're not eating, they're not eating properly. It just, they all start dying off, and it's sad. So anyway, so if you're interested, Saturday, June 12th at 4:00. We'll, I think that's gonna be before the next meeting, so we'll send it out. This Saturday is the horse pull. So the, the famous horse pull. And Rich Albrecht is going to be the announcer again, and I think it's his 26th year doing that. 25th or It's a 26 annual horse pull, and it may be the whole time, he may have been the announcer the whole time, but anyway, it's gonna be all day, starting at 9:00 in the morning. They're gonna have a mini, mini horses doing, pulling little cinder blocks. And then they're gonna have the draft. I asked Mary Jean Calvi if that was safe. I said, she said, "You wouldn't believe how strong they are." I said, "Okay." The draft horses are coming, are starting at noon. So you know that contest. We're not, we're not having our community day, but that, the horse pull goes on. So a couple of new things. I passed out the flyer that we came up with quickly for the Gaelic football training. Now, I haven't heard back from them. They, they, we had suggested, we'd asked them last fall if they could be, coach a class for us for this, in Gaelic football, and we, because we wanted to expose kids to it, because, you know, we're trying to have sports like we did T-ball. And that was very successful. But, you know, so we're trying to add a few things on, and last year we lost because of COVID, so we invited them, and they just recently came back and said, "Yeah, they were in position to do it." So that young man, Kieran, that, you know, used to work here, Kieran Mitchell, who works, and he raises money for the Timor.
Yeah.
Yes, the scholarship fund still. He will be the coach, and he may have a second coach, but there's gonna, they're gonna, we won't have more than 30 people. The idea would be, it goes from 6 to 13. But the idea would be that the parents, it's one week every day from 4:30 to 6:00. So if they're in camp, great. If they're not in camp, doesn't matter. They can come over from camp, or they can drive in. But it's an hour and a half of Gaelic football, and he teaches them from scratch. And he's trying to, he's gonna be volunteering his time. And if there's a second coach, we'll pay the second coach. But they sign up through my rec, it's our program that they are gonna be coaching for us. And then they sign up, they pay $100. And at the end of the week, they get a, it's either ice cream or pizza party and a free GAA t-shirt. And we've encouraged Kieran to have a little registration packet ready, because he's gonna ask these kids if they'd want to join in the fall for their program, which they do every Thursday night down here. So they're good clients of ours. They're renting the fields, and they're, they're doing Irish dancing in the arts and crafts room, and they're renting our facilities, and now they're gonna coach this for us, and we'll charge for it, and when we pay the expenses, I think the town may make a little bit of money on it, and every penny counts towards keeping our taxes down. Yeah, so it looks like a really good program. I'm waiting to hear back from them as far as their dates, but we're working on that, and then we have contacted some tennis pros, assuming that court gets done in time. Let's say they, hopefully they do it in June with all the rain. They don't want to start it. But if the court gets done in time, we could have a similar thing for tennis. You know, offering a big clinic for a group of, you know, local kids from 4:30 to 6:00, same thing. And then try to get a bunch of them interested in that game. So trying to find new things that the kids might like, and if that one pans out, we'll let you know, but that's being worked on now. These are all things, I mean, we'll cover this in depth at the board meeting, but. Oh, yeah, I wanted, you guys, I don't know if you've heard this or not, but for the second time, we had somebody write a complaint to Albany about the, the holiday lights and the safety issues surrounding those holiday lights. So the people up in Albany got in touch with George Colby and asked him a bunch of questions, and then they got in touch with me. And then I got a copy of the complaint and wrote a response and explained some things that they weren't aware of. And that was some time ago. We haven't heard from them since. But I think the thing about it that was a little disturbing is that a resident can write up to Albany and not tell the whole story, but still, you know, they make a complaint, which they're entitled to do.
Yeah.
But in making that complaint, they, it looked, it appeared as if they were trying to cast a shadow on George Colby's ability to do his job.
Oh, that's not right.
And that's not right, and I don't, and I think that's the way he took it. And it's certainly way off base, given we all know George, what a great job he does. So that, that brought in the response that I gave. And we haven't heard from them since, but I think now they've got a more well-rounded picture as opposed to, you know, you know, that there's a real deadly safety issue that the building, the code enforcement officer may be ignoring, which is clearly not the case. So anyway, that was helpful to get that and to be able to respond. That was done. Summer camp. So do you want me to have Allison Crook, would you like Allison, excuse me, to come and present in the regular town board meeting? Because she's only been on once before. She's our summer camp director. They, she's terrific. She is a no drama, very hardworking, terrific, and her assistants down there are great. And we have completely sold out four sessions of summer camp, and we have wait lists for each one.
Wow.
And we are only allowing 30 kids, we usually have 50. We're only allowing 30 kids to do pre and post care because of the guidance that was handed down by the state and the spacing requirements and about the pods, you have to keep the kids in, you know, to keep them separate. And we don't have enough room to keep them all, they're not gonna be, we don't know who's gonna stay for pre and post care. They're not all gonna be in the same pod. So we have to spread them all out. And it's gonna resemble more kids watching movies and stuff until their parents pick them up, because we can't do a lot of things with them, because we'll be mixing together kids from, that are supposed to be in separate pods all day.
Sure, yeah.
So it gets a little complicated, but I think the letter they wrote is explaining it well to the parents, and the parents are aware of the guidance, I'm sure. And the good news is that, you know, they're not gonna be wearing masks outside unless a parent is particularly insistent that their child wear the mask. You know, they're gonna facilitate what the parents want, but otherwise it, it won't be mandatory.
Good, yeah.
Because the assumption is that most kids aren't gonna, don't want to, you know, take the mask, and so they're gonna be, and they're all gonna be spread out. We got a lot of room. But anyway, the numbers are great. They, they, we have gone over the guidance 25 times, and they are prepared, and it looks, looks great. So, or I just thought, because they're prepared and they've done such a good job, that maybe if you guys think about it and you want, I don't have them come on sometimes at night because it's late for them, and they get up early to be over there.
If she's got her hands full, well, that, maybe she does need to come to another meeting.
Well, I'm happy to, I'll just have a write us a couple of bullet points that you guys would want to hear. Okay, all right, we'll do it that way. Great. The next thing is, let me just remind myself. Okay. So yesterday, George Colby and Tom Harvey and I did a pre, like a walkthrough, the solar development. And I got three ticks. Just want you to know. I came back here and they were jumping on the floor. So the place is loaded if you, when we, when we do a final walkthrough, but.
It was like everywhere.
Yeah, it's been a really tough, tough spring for everybody. I've heard that from a lot of people. But George has compiled the list of all the things that he feels like he needs in his department. I have a list from the financial side. I want to get this thing up. You actually left me a message about this, so I'm glad you're here. I want to get the thing up and running, because we start getting paid. Instead of the $400 a month, we start getting our, you know, real revenue once it's, you know. Yeah. But there are certain things outstanding, like there, you know, they, they haven't finished the driveway, the access driveway that the, that the, that's required, and it's part of their plan, on the side of the big land, I mean, on the side of the big development. So they've got to finish stuff like that. There's some Central Hudson Connection sign-off we're looking for, DOT sign-off. We did get the final electrical inspection. They do want to do a test this week. So we've gone through, you know, a bunch of that. I, I would appreciate it if, if you guys, we already did the 911 sign-off. Let me check that. Okay, it would be helpful if you guys would drive by and even pull in and take a look at the bushes and stuff. They've got, we had to remind him that they have to maintain. Nobody's mowed the grass, which is, you know, probably why those ticks are all over the place, but there's grass growing high in between the panel, rows of panels. So we reminded the Tim Ekinava, the local fellow. And it's kind of out of, some of these things are out of his hands. But they need to get in there and start cleaning it up, and he was confused, but the senior guys are not confused. He said, "Oh, don't, aren't you guys doing that?" I said, "No, no, we don't do that." And, but the senior people did know. But take a look at those, you know, they chose those boxwoods. They, they put them in at the beginning. I, I, we didn't insist they put them in at the beginning, but they did want to put them in at the beginning and then do the fencing. Several are dead. I don't think they've watered them other than from, you know, the rain, yeah. So some are dead, or, you know, you might say that they're dead, maybe they're not really dead, we'll see. But they also have wood chips on them in a place that doesn't get any water, so, you know, I said to him, you know, there's really, may want to put some organic mulch or something on there to retain the moisture, if you're not gonna water it. But Tim was the wrong guy. But basically, you need to, if you could just drive by, we, it clearly says, not only in the code, but in the plan and our agreement, that they could put in shrubs that were, that were slightly lower. We allowed them to put in that they were a little bit shorter than our code says, because they were putting them every five feet. So, and I have those emails that we all talked about. So we let them do that, but they're not watering them, they've got, and there's weeds all around them. I mean, we have to just have an opinion about that, if you don't mind, because I think we want to make sure before they get sign-off. If it doesn't look good, then it's never gonna look good. So, and George wants, he won't give them a sign-off until everything's done. But yet, we want it to get operational, so I think we need to put a little pressure on that side, along with the list that George has, which I think they're working through. Okay? So take a look there, if you don't mind, and let us know what you think. Okay, I forgot to make copies of this. I'm noticing I only have one here. This is the best value local law with the changes that I had, that Jeff Battistoni and I made. I'm just gonna give you a copy of this, and we'll go through it at the board meeting. So I'll give you this before we leave. I forgot about making the copies. But it's straightforward, and you know, that'll be, we'll have the pass a resolution, then we'll have a public hearing to see if anybody wants to change it, and then we'll pass it, do the final one. So that's in works. That will take a couple minutes at the board meeting. Okay. One of the things that we want to do is ask residents, and we, I'm thinking, do you want to have a open discussion, maybe a Saturday morning, something or other? This, I think there's gonna be a lot of incorrect assumptions about that American Rescue Plan money. And I want to make sure, I, I think we all want to make sure people understand what the guidelines are, even though it's not clear to me what the guidelines are, and I get the emails. But I think we want to make sure people understand what you're supposed to spend the money on. And I, I really want to make sure there's no confusion, that they think we're doing a bait and switch or something, and, you know, I, I just don't want anybody being confused. They were supposed to have some money sent out within 60 days of that bill being passed. I haven't heard one word.
And no money, right?
Zero money. We set up a separate, as I mentioned in one of our meetings, a segregated account at New York Class. So we have that ready. There was another step I was supposed to take. I did that. Nothing has happened. And then I found it interesting, so we got this from the Treasury. Well, we got it from our congressman, but it came, the Treasury is sending out guidelines. But remember, the Treasury is paying only the counties directly. And they're paying the states to pay us, because they don't have all the individual town information and all that. And like, the state has our accounts that they could direct deposit in. Anyway, so basically, what happened this past week was they sent out some guidelines, and they're still confusing, because they not only sent out guidelines, but then they went and they determined, they're trying to determine how much they're gonna pay, which we were told in that, from both Delgado's office and Senator Schumer's office, that we were gonna get $510,000. That was printed for everybody, right? So now, now they send something out, and it attached is a census for every town in city and county. And in the United States, actually, it's 88 pages. And when you look at Duchess and Unionville, we've lost 200 people.
So the 2020 census is down to 100?
No, they didn't use the 2020 census. They're using the, the estimate from 2019. So I wrote them back, because it's, the amount of money you get is population-based. So I said, "I'm just curious, why would you be using 2019? We just finished a big census. Why don't you use the accurate numbers?"
Yeah, most current.
Yeah, and then, you know, "Are you trying to just adjust the numbers, you know? Could you give us some more information about this?" And never, I haven't heard from anybody. I wrote the congressman's office, though. So maybe they'll get back to me. They probably have a lot of mail. But the other thing that's really important is, you know, they keep talking about water infrastructure, and then when you dig down, it's water, sewer, broadband, you know, they throw out these ideas. So I started getting the information from Optimum about how many accounts we have, and, you know, we do, we know we have some seniors. Alfreda has some friends that are having trouble with their internet system or the phone, but a lot of internet, too. And we have seniors that don't even have it, because they don't want to pay for the wires to come to their house, because they're more than 500 feet from the road, and, you know. So there is probably a percentage of people that we could make sure get broadband. So I called the county.
Excuse me, broadband means you don't need wires to go to your house?
No, to get internet connection, to get wires, to get them connected. Yes, it means they're gonna have wires connection to their house.
Because I wish they could upgrade Optimum's lines, but they're so poor. I find their internet is not really reliable, like my house.
Have you had them over? They're redoing a lot of lines.
Oh, really?
Yeah, what, let me answer this, we'll come back. First of all, our gentleman from Optimum has promised me, I've gotta confirm, that he will be at our next meeting.
This month?
This month. He promised, and I said, "You know, you're gonna have people on Zoom, and you're gonna have people in the room, but we're not doing Zoom next time." But we could for him, if we wanted, just for people to talk to him, but I said, "You're gonna get a lot of complaints," and he said, "I know, I know." So he's prepared, even though he got all the complaints that everybody sent us. I forward them to him, and they, they checked them off one at a time. They, they work on all the complaints that I send them, so that's good. So he's coming, but one of the things he had told me, John, was that a lot of our wires are old, and when they go to these houses to try to fix all those email problems I gave them, he said they, they're replacing wires on the spot.
Oh, okay.
So I can send, if you want, a quick, you can either call the call center and tell them you would like them to come out. And, or I'll send them, your name as a complaint. Try it, and if it doesn't work, we'll do it the other way. But if it works, they will come out, and when they figure out that the wires are so old, they're not working, they're replacing them. So that's good news.
Yeah.
You kind of have to have the problem to call them before they come, so. Anyway, I got, I'm working with him to get the data on our houses and all that. Then I called the county and was told that Mark Molinaro is gonna take on, but they're 57 million, which is a lot more than we have. They're going to wire the whole, they're gonna make sure the whole county has broadband. That every resident has it. So they can use their funds for that, and we won't have to. And it's easier for them, because they can negotiate bigger contract, you know, they can get more people, but they're going to, they've hired a consultant to start addressing what they would need to do and what it will entail. So that part's done. And then they're, they want to do that. So that relieves us from that. Now, that means, they kept talking about water, sewer, water, sewer, and I'm like, "Well, we don't have water, you know, we don't have water systems and sewer systems." But we have infrastructure needs, and all they're doing is saying, "If you spend the money on a project that we don't approve, we're not gonna give you the money for it." In other words, you'll have to pay us back. Right, they haven't given it, but they're assuming that they're gonna give it to us. And they would claw it back if we didn't spend it on the right thing.
This reminds me, the city of Patterson went on how many millions for home line security upgrades, and mayor bought all the garbage trucks. Nothing was done.
Oh, wow. Did they claw the money back?
We have water stuck behind the dam.
They did nothing. There was no
I like it.
It felt like a little, a little drinking.
Yeah.
On the, on the dams that I've said it's true.
Yeah, I like that. I like it. Well, you know, if we word it properly in our explanation, it might work. I, I don't know, but so, nothing's happened yet, but I think as soon as we have a little more concrete information, I think we should have a workshop with the residents or something to make sure they're, because this is big, it'll probably never happen again. To make sure they understand what the guidelines are and have a discussion about, you know, any thoughts they might have, but I, I think really, so they understand it, even though it's too far away from us, I'm sure.
What do we have that would really qualify for that mine?
Well, if they use the word "infrastructure", if the word "infrastructure" is, as most of us know the word to be, which Congressman Delgado said, "Yeah, it's any infrastructure you have." But since he was so optimistic, it just seems like the Treasury is reining things in a little bit. And so they, they do say "infrastructure". They say you can help small businesses that have failed in your town. You can replace lost revenue.
Gee, that's our recycling center.
It hasn't failed. They made money last year. They, and we, but we can replace lost revenue, which we can document based on our budget.
Yeah, the camp stuff last year.
Right, I mean, all of that. We, I mean, we actually, I have, I have a year-end report that we can provide. It shows that we lost $311,000. So that, that's one use for the money. So we have that, but, you know, I think we're, we kind of identified, you know, part of our, you know, part of ours could go to that roof, you know, as, you know, or library and things like that. We've got our list. But we want to make sure it qualifies, and I have to double and triple-check that before we venture down a path. So it'll be a little slower than we like, and since we haven't gotten the money, it doesn't matter, but anyway, that's all I have, and as soon as we have something concrete, we, maybe we open up the discussion. And, but anyway, Unionville's down to 4,600 people. We were 48, 77.
I still don't understand that, because the official census is every 10 years. What was taken in 2019?
I don't know.
To say we lost 200?
I mean, they already know the numbers from the census, because they used it to take away one of our representatives. So clearly, they know, they've done the count, so why don't they, I don't know, but that's what, it had an 88, 88-page Excel spreadsheet.
Sounds like you're playing games.
Yeah, it just doesn't, you know, I don't know, sometimes the left hand doesn't tell the right, I don't know. But we were down to 4,600 people. So that's less money for us, but we'll see.
Then we should be in MS410.
There you go.
Right?
Yeah, although all the big money was already spent, I think. But it just would get us out of
I mean, we want it both ways.
Yeah, no, you're right. Okay, I have more folders, but here, I, I thought we could, I wanted to walk through with you a, a little bit about our Hudson Valley, you know, the balloon festival. So you guys have to share. Sorry about that thing that year.
Oh, I had a very, very, very last year.
Okay, it's a little different. It's a little different. They came and met with No, I'm good. I have one here, thanks. So the, the way that this differs from last year is they, they do want to use, and this was on the map, you're right, John, they do want to use the soccer fields up top for parking up there. And they do want to use the spot, you know, that like last year that we use for tailgating at town hall. They do want to use that, and they're estimating they get 541 cars up there. They want to use a picnic area on the sloping road on this side of Dunk, on the far side of Duncan. They want to use, obviously, the main ball fields down there, just like last year with all the, all the balloons. And some of the differences are having food vendors, having a beer and wine tent, having, they, they want to have staff parking up at the equestrian center. And we have room for parking on the left, anyway. And, and, but this is interesting, so some of these pilots who can't drink, you know, they, they have 12 hours before a flight or anything like that, so they're not party people, but some of these pilots, in order to save money, would like to bring their trailers and sleep somewhere in the park, and we do issue camping permits, so a couple of the ones with trailers would like to sleep, have their trailers, and we told them they could go along the tree line, the far back of the equestrian center. And they'll just park there, because they have to be here at 5:00 in the morning.
Sure.
Every morning. And then other pilots, I think, if, if we don't get them to camp here, they're all gonna be staying at Frank's house, so he's so the, the, the campgrounds that we have up there. Beyond the pool. There are some that are actually bringing tents and would like to stay back there, because they thought the park was so pretty last time, and they, they can walk right over. And there's public restrooms, so there's a camping element, which is fine, you know. But the beer and wine, the food vendors, they also, you know, now, we can have, Frank's gonna come in when we get our bearings and we know what we want. We'll have him in to explain it in his own words. But basically, what he wants to do is have a, he, he wants one-way traffic. So he wants this on Duncan Road to be the main entrance. And then they come around that way, and then people will exit down by, you know, the, the second exit on the Timor Park Road, back by, by in the field.
Yeah, that makes sense. We did it for camp a lot of years.
Yeah. So, you know, we'd have guards at the door. They're gonna have 12, it's gonna be $12 a person. The interesting thing, though, is, because we, we had completely told him that we had to cancel our, we had to cancel our, our, our community night. And that we were gonna have now, and that the county had really kind of discouraged us from having it so soon. So, but this is in September, and told him that we were a little bit bummed, because it was a big thing for us, and we had fireworks, all that. He's put on fireworks all three nights.
Wonderful.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So now, so they're gonna do it now, so that means he also wants to use the field where the fireworks are, as you told me, John, where they drug, didn't? I saw that road exactly today. It's, that was funny. So they, they'll use that field for the fireworks, and John, you were telling me that the place becomes a mess up there, it gets really messy, right? Or was that Jake? Was it Jake? It might have been Jake.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't ever see it messy, because I've gone up there with a fire truck some year to be close to where they
Right. I think it was Jake was telling me, "It's just all the debris from the fireworks comes, and there's a lot for them to clean up after." And then, so that, now, the other thing is that we have to decide on, I told them we weren't allowed to have drones in the park, so all the pictures they took last year were from balloons, which is why some of those really nice pictures. But I said, "We have a, you know, the, you know, we, we're too close to them. We have to get special permission, because we're close to the airport." So anyway, he wants to do back with, remember what, in the old day, you're probably too young, but you, you remember, Georgia told me all about how it, they used to have community day to here with a helicopter ride?
Yeah, it's nice.
Right from the middle of the baseball field, they go up, and on community day, give you a helicopter ride to see all of Unionville? Well, he wants to do it back up here, where the blue circle is. He's got somebody standing by, and people can, and, and it's blocked by that one bridge that goes across the, so nobody would be allowed over there to be near either the fireworks or the helicopter. And, and, so anyway, he would offer these helicopter rides, and they'd have to, you know, they're gonna have to have a flight pattern that they all adhere to, but he's like a real, this guy has a million toys for everybody.
He was gonna say, it worked last year, it played well, I don't know.
Yeah. So we have to decide if the helicopter is something that, you know, we feel comfortable with. And what else is he talking about? I mean, one of the worst-case scenarios, and we have to look into this, because only a town board can close a road. But one of the, one of the worst-case scenario is, you know, we rent these fields out, and we have people that have built them all the way through the fall. And if this, there's a lot of rain, then Jake is, you know, we, we really don't want to let 500 cars, or however many, 200, whatever they have over here, ruin soccer fields that have been rented. They'd have to be repaired.
Yeah.
And then they have to stay off of them while they're being repaired, and they have to dry and all that. So we started talking about what would happen, what's the plan B if there's a lot of rain? And the plan B might be to park cars along Duncan Road, which may mean closing that road. And I know a town board can close a road for an event.
Why would we have to close it?
Well, because he's, his fear is the two-way traffic and kids running between cars, kind of like what we saw with the snow. He's obviously very community-oriented and doesn't want to annoy anybody, but he doesn't want any danger either. And so the two And so the two-way traffic on the road makes it, makes.
It could be one-way.
Well, it'd be one-way, I'm sorry. If we did not close it, it's, there's two-way traffic.
Most of the cars are going to be going through the balloon fest anyway.
Well, I don't, we don't know that, but yeah, I would hope so. Wouldn't it be nice?
So the road can't really be completely closed because they're gonna be driving there in a car.
Well, they're, if they're coming from Brussels Road, we have a path for them. He was trying to cut it off so that by the equestrian center, so that people coming in from the other side don't come in that way. They go around.
I see.
So it would stop the traffic coming this way.
Yeah.
And there will be one way, as you just said, one-way traffic, but.
They could come up as far as number two Duncan, uh, Time of Park Road there and make a right, right turn if we're down and out that way, right?
Well, he was hoping back by the equestrian center because we're gonna have, he, he was also, he's really got a. He was a, a working mind. He, he was talking about having a horse drawn hayride and taking the kids around to these various. Go to the equestrian, you know, we've done for community day and, you know, taking kids around and then that, leaving that road open would also make that a lot of fun for kids. We don't have to do it, but I think that we can do it if, you know, we, we're empowered to, if we want to. His concern was if we can't park on those soccer fields, we're in trouble for parking spaces. Because with all the extra things he's added here, they're expecting twenty-four hundred people. So then he said, then they'd be parking all along Duncan Road, and if you have people coming in both directions, it's quite dangerous. In his view. And he does, he is pretty good at this stuff.
Okay.
So I told him that we would, you know, we'll talk about, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll get the details for what we'd have to do to close the road. We'll talk about it at the regular board meeting. And then we can have him come in, you know, the following month.
Yeah, okay.
After he's finalized something. He's threw out a lot of ideas. How do they all sound to you guys? You guys like the ideas?
Yeah, I think it's great.
All of it?
Really, very worthwhile. I just hope this is.
Yeah, the weather would be the only thing that could throw a snap when you're putting parking in cars. It's gotta be a lot smaller.
Well, of course, if the weather's bad, you're not gonna get that kind of line as well.
Or if it rains up until the, you know, if you got a week of rain beforehand.
Yeah.
That'd be awful.
But I'm just saying an extra parking for the soccer fields.
Yeah.
Or if you can put Duncan Road that's on one way, you might a lot of parking on that road.
Well, then you got the freedom to use it for other things. Like he said, you could take brides and do all this kind of stuff and. But maybe there's a compromise there. I, I, you know, I'll get the procedures so that like, we can discuss, this is what has to happen if we were gonna do it, and then we can talk about it then.
It sounds like a lot, it sounds like a really, you know, a good time for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, good, good. Well, he'll be in to explain it once he finalizes everything. He's working on his budget. I think he has his budget, but. He's working on his budget. Now, we have to, now, here's what Jake and I worked on today. So, the sheet that I passed out for you is, is what we use when one-off things come in that aren't on our normal, you know, fee schedule. So, we tend to do this and, you know, like I scribble all over it, but for example. Last year, they, and I'm trying to confirm this because Stephanie has all the paperwork, she'll be here tomorrow. But the, it looks to me like they, they paid us. The agreement that Frank signed was twenty-one hundred and twenty-five dollars last year. For the rental of, because all they did was have the parking.
Right, the windows.
This time, they, they've done a walkthrough, they've been over several times, and they want to use the large hall and everything. Well, here, they want to use the large hall and then they saw the senior citizens hall. They, they really liked the senior citizen, the senior room. The small pavilion, the large pavilion, they maybe, they were interested in perhaps selling some of their, some food items out of the, where, you know, using that window. So using the interior of the concession stand. They're gonna have a band, I forgot to tell you, they're gonna have some sort of music on the bandstand there. So they're gonna have that. So they would rent that. The equestrian center normally rents out for two hundred and fifty dollars a day. I don't know if that it's on your line or not, because, yeah, I think I didn't, it was on there.
Yeah.
Last year, we had constables. Working and, and, you know, the constables are the ones, we don't have staff that have to work with us because they hire all their own staff. So our constables were the ones with their eyes and ears open, watching to make sure everything was taken care of, and they did a fabulous job, as you guys know. But our constables were another cost for them. So, you know, when, when we went through the numbers, it comes out, because of all the individual items being rented, it comes out to almost five thousand dollars this year. But what we did not put on here is the area over by the helicopter and the fire, where the fireworks and the helicopter would be, and that will. Take some dings, probably some cleanup maybe only. And, or the big ball fields down here because we didn't do that last year. But we've got, we've got the soccer fields covered, we got the equestrian center, we've got all the facility, you know, the, the actual structures in here. And we've got constables working the various hours that they're open. And, and I know George Treadwell himself and Jack were here a lot last year and they were guides to them, they were, you know, they pointed out where things were, they. They helped them and they watched things for us. So all of that, all of that was about, you know, it was just about right under five. And, but we didn't put those other things I mentioned on. So I don't know if you had any, are we missing anything is what I'm asking you because. That's normally what we do for events is we just add up our normal fee schedule. Now, Frank is a resident, so we were using the residence fees. I know that there's a higher fee, slightly higher fee, well, it's actually higher. Like by thirty percent, actually. There's a higher fee schedule for non-residents.
But he is a resident.
But he's a resident and he's renting it. So he, we gave him the residence fees.
Yeah.
So, but it is higher than last year and, and there is wear and tear, but. A lot more people.
But it would be nice to have an event like this, this year, because people really need to get out and do something. Everything has been so confined.
Yeah, and this year they can actually walk around and get a glass of wine or a beer and, you know, last year they had none of that.
Yeah.
You know, they just had, which was still fun, but I, I, you know, this year they're hoping to really make it more, this is their thirtieth year. So, they seem to be really happy that they're here.
Good, well, I think we should encourage them and work with them.
So our approach is to go back to them with these numbers and we're doing it the same way we do for everybody else at the residence rate. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So we're gonna, we'll send it over to Frank tomorrow and, or Monday and then. Get his response and then he'll, he'll add or take out the things that he thinks aren't going to be a big hit. He's still working on it, but he's good. Knows what he's doing. Okay. So thanks for that. We will get that done with him and share it. What's this? So, good news, we got a very large mortgage tax today. Well, it's gonna hit our account on Friday. But it, some of it was for twenty twenty, which gets allocated to twenty twenty, some of it's for this year. I think we're gonna be way over budget, you know, we.
Well, that's great.
Yeah, we're gonna end up, I mean, we're still under budget now because it's a, you know, an angelized number, but. I think that we budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand and I think we're gonna be closer to two hundred. Which will be, which is really great. And all, and, and everybody's experiencing the same thing, but that's nice. Another thing, and I, I waited, you know, I'd gotten this before Andrea, this email that you gave me that went to George, but I, I wanted to wait and talk to the board about it here. That's why I didn't put it at the last board meeting. But anyway, if you guys want to go by and look. I find it weird to vote on these things without seeing them and knowing what they are, but this family has three households. And they want to, they've agreed to the driveway and, and they want to name the driveway for nine-one-one purposes. Remember, we've been through this with Shady Noel. That if you're gonna have a driveway with your name on it, it has to be registered with nine-one-one. And so basically it's. Three oh two eight Route eighty-two. So it's three oh two eight, three thirty and three thirty-six, uh, thirty, thirty and thirty thirty-six. All on Route eighty-two. And they want to name their driveway, their common driveway, Farriers Forge. You can vote on it and it won't happen unless you vote on it. If you want to go by and look at it, so you know, before we vote next time, I'll put it in. The same resolution we've used before, just to make sure it happens for the families or for these households. So it's Patty Kleena and Marvin Kleena and Daniel Kleena, which is nice. So, three oh two eight.
Oh, yeah, their house burned a year and a half ago.
And they rebuilt it.
Yeah, they just rebuilt it.
Is that nice? So.
Yeah. And he's been a farrier, her father, for forever.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, I think it's a nice idea.
Yeah, it's nice.
The only thing I don't like on names is when they take a name that's similar. Like we have Galley Lane and Gale Lane. And that causes problem for emergency response.
Oh, yeah. That makes sense.
Two opposite sides of town, too.
Hmm?
Two opposite sides of town.
Right, yeah, sometimes you have people go in the wrong direction.
Oh, a long way.
Or people mispronounce it on the nine-one-one dispatch and people misunderstand where it is.
That's too bad.
Or you have Deer Hollow Road at this end and Deer Pond up on the canopy, so. As long as the name to me is not similar to an existing name, I'm very good.
Barriers Forge.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sound good? All right. We'll get that ready if you want to swing by and take a look. Yeah. Yeah, take a look.
Turning the town along.
Here's something interesting that came up. So I got a, one of our very lovely residents who, who writes with good ideas all the time. Anyway, as I mentioned to Andrea today, and she's experienced it as well, Peckham Industries is, is constantly blasting up there.
I know, I could hear it yesterday quite a bit.
At your house?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wow. So. Well, I called them today to, to ask them, I said, look, you know, is there, don't you have a notification policy so that at least our residents know what's going on? Because they're calling here and they're emailing and they're thinking they're gonna implode the whole place. And, you know, if you live up on Blueberry Hills, I mean, you know, you, you hear it.
I'm concerned about people as well.
Insane, if you know.
What, say that again?
Regulation.
Well, what about John?
I mean, it's, like, they have monitors all over the place, seismic, all over the place.
Good.
Ensure that there's not too much ground shaking, I guess, or.
Great. But John just mentioned about their wells. He said he'd be, you know, that's actually a really interesting question.
I think people up on Ridge Chris have very deep and very inadequate wells. And I'm sure it's related to those, all the mining right under them.
Oh, wow. So are they taking the top?
You know, they're in Dover, but they come underground to Unionville.
Well, and, and it's the whole group up there, the residents up there, they're feeling it.
Yeah, I think we should do something to protect those people.
I don't know if we can. I think the state regulates that. So, I mean, I, do you mind where there's so much regulation between, you know, D E C is in there constantly, the M show is like, like OSHA with the mining. It's constantly in there.
Well, I didn't. Yeah, and I, and I figured that because I know even in our own town, the D E C is watching, you know, the gravel lines and stuff, right? So. But, you know, I called them today just to say, you know, we have residents that are emailing and calling and they're upset. They don't really know what's going on. Other than, as, as this person put it, that he thinks they're really truly trying to implode Blueberry Mountain, you know, like. So that's interesting that you're talking about, and Ed, I asked, called Ed today and Ed told me something similar. They're gonna remove the top. So I asked them.
What do you mean by removing the top?
Because it's an underground mine now, so there's, you know.
It's gonna look like a volcano.
In Unionville or just all?
It's all in Dover.
I mean, they.
It was a town line, it's very close to that.
The time it'll take for them to get all the way to Unionville, you know, it'll be a million, it'll be a million. A hundred years, you know, mine.
I'd love to go see it. Maybe they'll give us a tour. He, he told, he, he said that he would if we were interested.
Oh, definitely.
I think it would be a good thing to do, but just so we can, so, all I did today though, to be hon, what I, what I called them today, I said, look, we've got people calling and writing. And they're either scared or just want to know what the heck's going on. And he said, oh, you're not on the email list? I said, well, no, nobody's ever invited us to be on an email list. And so I put. George's name and the town clerk's name and my address on because we're the three that tend to get those types of calls. And so I said, just, let me, and anyway, I got his name and number and I can call him at any time, but he said that they send out notices two weeks before. So at our regular board meeting, I think we want to tell everybody, you, you know, if you, you need to know what's going, you've got to get on that email list. And he said, they have, they even have a list of people they call that don't get emails. So they will call you to say, hey, he said they do big blasting five times, five to six times a year. But every day they're doing a little blasting inside.
All right, so maybe if we get on the mailing list, we could announce it at the town board meeting prior to.
Right, exactly.
Can we post the sign, address on our website for the residents? To get on that email distribution list.
Yeah, we can definitely post it and we'll send it out on Unionville mail and say, here, write this guy. I hope he doesn't mind us giving his name. Yeah, but I, they, you know, if you're, at least if you're added, they, they never have knocked on our door and said, hey, we, we want you to know because you have residents. Living right there. They've never done that and that's probably a shame on them. But if they're notifying people two weeks in advance, we're glad to get that. So, all right, so we'll get that. And I think it would be, maybe we organize a field trip. For residents up there that might want to go see it and understand it better, including town board members.
I don't think they do it at town, but they definitely do a community night at the Pleasant Valley one. Where it, it sounds like a boss and they take you on a tour and do all kinds of stuff just to make residents aware.
I think they would, the lady on the phone and then she handed, she gave me somebody else, a gentleman that handles all the blast, all the blast calls. He made it sound like they do the same thing here. Not, not, maybe not as extensive as Pleasant Valley, but because they're doing so much here, you know, they, if they're doing big blasts, they have a name for it. If they're doing that five to six times a year and, and they're sending out notice two weeks in advance, it would seem to me that. He said, we have people over, we invite you in, you can come and take a tour. So maybe we mention that at the town board meeting and try to get a couple of dates from him and get the board. Okay. All right. And then we'll post that email address, post email, sign up. Anyway, I, I've never heard it at my house, so I was pretty much surprised by the whole thing. I forgot the resolution at the last meeting for the recycling center to, to remind. The resolution will say. That the recycling center is often closed, not always, we don't want to, because some, one year we might decide to leave it, but it's often been closed on Easter Sunday. But those guys are willing to work and it's not a town posted holiday, so we want to post, our resolution is gonna say that we are going to pay them for that day. So it'll be either their, their holiday day just for them if we decide to close it, and if people, if you want to have it open, they're happy to work. But regardless, those two fellows need to get paid for that day and to do it fair. So that's the res, I forgot it some, for some reason. So that'll be at the town board meeting. We're, we're working to pay those bills that the highway department. Has incurred for.
Blacktop?
Blacktop, that got paid today. So that was five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And the oil and chip is coming in. We haven't gotten it yet. Soon as it comes in, we're getting a check out the door because we need them to cash those checks so we can use that to get a reimbursement.
From chips.
From chips.
Yeah.
So we're working on that and, you know, we'll be as quick about that, get that money back as we can. This I can wait and go over at the meeting. There's nothing unusual about that. Best Value, you're gonna get a copy of tonight. Oh, interesting, some interesting things at that supervisors and mayor's meeting. Last night or Tuesday night. So, it's really interesting to me. So Rob Rollison, as mayor of Poughkeepsie, they're getting twenty million dollars, Poughkeepsie. And they're hiring capital markets, you know, that, I, I don't know if you've ever seen it, you guys are newer, but there's a company, Capital Markets, that constantly sends out where interest rates are. Should you want to bond something. And they're hiring them to talk to them about the twenty million dollars. And, and it sounded like they wanted them to help them understand the treasury rules better. And then help them figure out how they're gonna spend the money. So, everybody wanted to hire them and share the cost. And I said, no. And, I mean, I just said, I'm not for it because I wouldn't hire somebody to do something we can do ourselves. I don't want to pay them.
I don't blame you.
Yeah, so I said, no, but I was. Yeah, so I said, no, but I was really surprised that most people want to hire, now, this is a bond house, right? That's what they do, and they're going to ask them to, can you help us read the treasury guidelines? I think the congressman's office would be more than happy to do that. And Schumer's office has been very helpful, so I mean, I, I think that, and, and then, um, if, you know, when we understand those guidelines. So unless we get a proposal from them, which I'll share with you as soon as I get something in writing, unless we get a proposal that makes sense to me, I don't think we should spend one penny on that. But I understand if you get twenty million dollars that you want to cover your, you want to, you want to have a little extra team effort there to spend that much money wisely. But I said that I think we were all comfortable with the amount of money we were getting, we had multiple lists going, and I think we're in pretty good shape. So I don't think we need to spend any money, but if the rules change.
Yeah.
And if it gets weird, maybe we should call a treasury person to come in and help us.
I'd say, yeah, there's usually money, I mean, help from the federal level.
Yeah, I think they do a conference call.
And these bond people, what is their real knowledge?
Bond artists.
Well, they think they know, this is new ground.
Well, they're going to read the same material that we get to read.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so.
They hit no leg up on anything.
Yeah, but I, I, I can understand the big towns. You know, you get into those bigger towns that are getting so much money, they, they don't, they don't want to look like it's like just a small group of people making the decision. I think they want to look judicious and Mary Kabuchi was saying, uh, last night that, you know, she feels like people from Beakman are knocking on town hall's doors saying, you know, can I have my money, please? Like, they really don't understand. I said, well, we don't have that problem, people are not misunderstanding what's going on. But, uh, so some towns are feeling that residents are really not sure what's going on. But I think we, we're going to end up talking about it at every meeting because we hope there's going to be some news, and I think our residents should, will know. And we always invite input, either personally, where people call you, or I, I think if we want to have one of those workshops, once we know all the guidelines, we should feel, you know, we can announce that. So I, I don't think it's a big deal yet because maybe we're just not getting as much money as they, they're getting so much money, some of them, that they want to look like they're handling it right, so. All right, five G. Now. It sounds like five G is going to be used by people like Verizon to plug some rural holes where they've been able to, unable to get cell towers. So I don't know if they're going to be knocking on our door, but here's the thing with, with five G. Um, and what, the reason I'm mentioning it is, and Kevin, you, you might be able to guide us a lot on this, because with five G, um, you know, there, the five G, that, that, that small cell, it's going to be a box like this. And it's a white box, and they hang these white boxes on already existing poles. And, um, the thing about them, and, and I just remember this from, like, stocks that we were interested in buying, reading about the stock and why, why, you know, it made sense. So my information is only, you know, that deep. But they hang these white boxes on utility poles everywhere, but they have to hang them like every five hundred feet. So there are people that don't like, I, I was reading in California, there are some towns that they're going crazy. They don't want it blocking their view of the Golden Gate Bridge or, you know, whatever, and, um, but in a rural community, i- it would actually solve a problem. And if it's every five feet amongst a bunch of trees, I don't think, I, I don't think, unless they're, you know, really dumb about it, it, it would be bad.
So it'd be analogous to transformers, I'm sure.
There are, yeah, and, yes, you don't know, like, they, they stick a little.
They are very big, they're, they're cone shaped.
Yeah, that's optimum, you see, like, all the tall and poles.
Those are optimums.
It's essentially making Wi-Fi for their outside network that.
That's not five G though.
Yeah.
That's optimum stuff. And he did tell me that they're.
Yeah, but the antennas are very small.
You're talking about for the optimum?
No.
For, uh, five G.
The antenna on the box?
Yeah, the antennas that they're putting around the town are very small, they're hardly noticeable. They're not, they're not huge.
We don't have any five G being installed around our town.
But we're not the only town in the.
You're talking about a different town, or you didn't say.
Yeah, I've seen them, I've seen them, that's what I'm trying to say. They are not as intrusive as it, it's been made to sound, that they, uh, they're, they're on an existing telephone pole. It's a little white thing that hangs on the pole and hardly notice it.
Yeah, I mean, unless you're looking for it, you won't see.
Is it close to Kansas?
It's the ones that.
That depends on who you talk to.
I think they're optimum too. There's very few towns that have had five G, if any, in this area yet, I think Kevin's right, they're optimum, those are, that's.
I mean, the whole thing with wireless broadband too, I mean, that's, you need a lot of antennas, you know? You won't be able, like, you know, in a urban area, it's easy to cover, but in rural areas where we are, a lot more difficult.
Well, that's why they're saying it would be required every five hundred feet, that's a lot of boxes, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah, I mean, but if they can name them on tall and poles or whatever, you're really going to notice them.
So what we have to do, because when they come knocking at the door, is, um, what we have to do is have our ducks in a row, we have to be ready. So basically, it's only a sixty day shot clock. So the minute, and it's not when the application is complete, it's the minute they submit a piece of paper or an email or a request that they want to start coming in our area, the sixty day clock starts ticking and we have to. So I was reading where some place, and you can do some reading about this, though, some places are requiring it to make sure that's, you know, um, three thousand feet away from some, a bedroom. You know, you, you can put in stipulations like that, but, you know, if they're.
As I say, the FCC, they, they have guidelines.
The FCC has tons of guidelines.
So it's, you know.
And the state has guidelines, so my understanding is, it, it's, um, the state, but I, I was trying to find where the state had finalized. Um, there, and I can't, I'm going to call, uh, Kiran and Sue Serena's office tomorrow and ask them to send us what they are, because it looked to me like they said, the state of New York set up a committee to look at health effects of this five G box, which is going to, you know, the FCC said you can't take into consideration anyway, as you know, Kevin.
Yeah, exposure for the smaller.
Yeah, so, but the, the last thing I could, that's the last thing I could find in New York, but the beginning, New York was recommending two hundred dollar max per box. It's a permit only. And the only thing that we can do to have ourselves ready is to make sure we've discussed it, and if we want to do anything in zoning or placement, um, that would say, you know, so many feet from a bedroom window, we can't do that.
Are they going to try to go the route that you said, where they, where is that from permit still?
Uh, not what, from what I read, and I don't think New York State's letting them, I don't think New York State is letting them avoid local governments entirely, but New York State and, um, is kind of demanding that we not charge over, I think the last thing I read was don't charge over two hundred dollars. And, uh, you, the FCC mandated, you can't go longer than sixty days. And they are suing people that make mistakes, they are out there because they want five G everywhere, it's kind of like a race to the finish with everybody in the world. Um, so I think it's a conversation, I think what we do is we, we get all the parameters, I'll, I'll call the politicians' office to see if they can send us parameters. And then, Kevin, maybe you can help lead us in this, what, we can lay out all the facts, and I think all we have to do is say, this is the way we want to do it here. We'd have a little permit paper, they fill it out, they give the money, you know, write a check to George and they're on their way. It's, it would really end up being that simple. But at least we know about it, we'd have a record of how many, okay? But if we're not ready, we're, we're in danger, I think. Um, so the last thing is, um, I, I think, you know, have you guys had a chance to talk to anybody about the marijuana stuff? The cannabis legalization? Not really, right? Um, it's like everybody knows about it, I think we were pretty much in agreement that we're not opting out of anything, we're just going to let it ride because it's unfeasible anyway, they could. You can't opt out of having home delivery, which is kind of stupid, right? So if you can opt out, I, I think, um.
Do we have to December or January to issue them?
Well, we have to pass a permissive referendum, which would mean we'd have no later than October to start that, to do that. Because that's a three month process, has to be done by the end of the year. So, um, the, the only, the other thing I could say is, um, they, they, there's certain requirements. I think what, um, Alan Bell and I, and, and we're talking about last night, and, and since he had twenty years on the planning board, so he's, he's pretty knowledgeable.
Sure.
Um, is, I think in La Grange, what he wants to do with his group is just put, you know, um, gi- give certain stipulations as far as, um, where, if, if ever, you know, like, if you're going to have one of the retail stores, they have many more places than we do. But we too can dictate a little bit, like they can't be within two hundred feet of a, 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 a house of worship and five hundred feet from a school, you know, stuff. So we can put all that in a nice neat package and have it written, but I think, uh, you know, I think his point was, in La Grange, they need to give them guidelines as to where they can, from a zoning perspective, where they're permitted. So, I mean, are we going to have people operating out of their house, or are we going to follow the normal house rule, house business rules? So, you know, there are certain times you can't have a business out of your home, I think, in certain places. I think what we need to do is review it and then see where we want to put those guidelines, it can't be restrictive, and if we don't opt out, it's not going to be restrictive. Um, this, you know, um, and we're not going to be able to permit, I mean, that all happens in New, in Albany, they want to do all the permitting.
Yeah, they want all the money.
They want all the money, they want all the fees, and they want all, but they will ask us our opinion, if somebody asks for a permit, they will get an opinion from us. Um. It's like a liquor license, I mean, it's going to be like that, they're going to keep all the revenue from it, but I think we do have to give some thought. Now, I don't, the best way to do this is we could work, we could hire gen, well, we have a planner, we said, you do all the work and then tell us what your recommendation is, or we could throw out some ideas and kind of keep it open, but do you want to, the thought is, do you want to confine it to certain parts of town? Do you want to keep it out of other parts of town, not, you can't be restrictive, but I mean, does it make sense? If somebody wanted to open a dispensary, did, you know, would it be like, they could operate one of those out of their house, I would think, if they could get the license out of Albany. Uh, those are.
Yeah.
If it's in a neighborhood, I think some residents might not like them.
Probably not, no.
So maybe we, we could confine it to town center zone? There you go, the bountiful is be awesome.
And also if they want to get a farm.
Well, I was looking.
Not necessarily grow, but it seems like, almost like they have, like, like farm, but, but, not that they grow it there, but people wander around.
Well, that, and I was waiting for. Um, I, they, they, the ag and market, ag and market side hasn't really kicked in yet, like, they, they've started with the personal consumption, which is what we're dealing with. And that, I would imagine that that's coming, so. Yeah, I mean, it's funny, it's not covered in anything, and they, they just wasn't, it's all about adult use. And who's going to give the licenses, but I can see what you mean, like, what if they wanted to, you know, have a tasting room with this?
Instead of wine or marijuana?
So we'd have to give some thought to what the residents would feel comfortable with.
Does the town have any rules for liquor stores or yon or special?
It's a special, it's a planning board item, I mean, it goes to the planning board for a special, for a special use permit. And they don't always, you know.
I mean, there's places where, yeah.
I think what we have to do though is put it in our zoning now, because they're not going to be coming, my understanding is they're not coming to a planning board for permit, they're going to Albany. So if that's the case, we have to have already in writing where we're confining or keeping, as long as, you know, they keep saying it cannot be unduly restricted. So I think, you know, we'll do, why don't we get a, um, we'll get somebody on a conference call to talk a little bit about the legal side of it.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be a good next step for us?
I would think so.
You want to start there instead of the planner and just saying, you know, and, and then, um, talk to residents, and we'll ask residents to hear now and at the next meeting, please, come back to us with any of your thoughts, I mean, if they, they've been traveling around, a lot of these people go to Colorado and they come back with great stories about what's going on there. Um, how we might keep it away from areas that the residents would be uncomfortable with, even though they know it's legal, so. We'll get some feedback and I'll try to get somebody to do a call. Okay? Okay. And really, let me just see, that might be all that I have, we have events coming up, we have camp coming up. Um. Just look at the calendars, we, we send out flyers and they're on Facebook all the time, I would say, try to come to anything that you can, because everybody's worked hard on them and. But that's, I believe that's all that I have. Facility rentals you know about. Um, the solar development, you know, we've got a checklist, and then when, soon as that's done and they paint, then that should be up and running, and we'll announce it in a big way when it's done. Um, the Millbrook Inn is trying to get permission to open from the zoning board that they were finished doing, now they're back to the planning board, and that'll be a really cute place on Camby Road, Camby and Gifford. Um, that's about, I mean, that's really literally all I, I have, we've got kind of so many things in, in the works.
Do you want me to give you the final prices?
I think that's the reason we're here tonight, we're going to vote on that.
I'll hear you.
They're ready.
All right, so I've got three prices from three different websites that seem to be prevalent.
Prevalent on, uh, you know, online. Uh, basically, all the same height, thirty-five feet. Um, and then I got whatever power, whatever, uh, rating, had the best rating that they had at that height. Um, so I basically found a hundred and twenty mile per hour pole, a hundred and fifty mile per hour pole, and another hundred and twenty. That's about the max, and then, um, so all internal halyard. Um, basically, basically all the same, um, this one was a hurricane pole, it's a little bit thicker metal, a little bit wider at the base. Um, so I'll just go through the, the three prices. Uh, one is thirty-six hundred, uh, which included the freight and a six by ten nylon flag. Um, the other was forty-four seventy-five, and that included two flags, one of, one that was a six by ten and one that was a, um, a five by eight.
So we could do, put a Unionville flag up?
Right, so if we want to fly a Unionville flag, then we have to fly a five by eight American flag, and a four by six Unionville flag. And that's like the max that the pole can hold, I guess, at the max wind speeds. Uh, and then another one is basically right at four thousand. Um, and it's similar to, same, same height. So basically, the, the real, the real choice is thirty-six hundred, forty-four hu, forty-five hundred, and four thousand. Are basically it, they all have about the same lead time, it's like three to four weeks. Um, the, the most expensive one, which was forty, just about forty-five hundred, that's the one that was a little bit thicker, a little wider at the base.
And could withstand up to what, fifty?
Hundred and fifty miles an hour, with a flag on it, two hundred and fifty-five miles an hour without a flag on it. And the other two were basically one-twenty with a flag, two-hundred without a flag. Um, so basically, I almost say you throw out the one that was four thousand because it's the exact same pole as the one that's thirty-six hundred. Uh, and that one included a six by ten flag, so basically between thirty-six hundred for a point one eight eight thick pole, and the other one is, uh, forty-five hundred for a point two five thick pole.
With two flags.
Yeah, which basically a quarter inch, all, all was the same thing, all satin, satin finished aluminum.
And the more expensive one has better poles, better lanes, or whatever they're called?
Uh.
Bigger?
I think a better.
Oh, and they're thinking with better higher winds?
Yeah, yeah, that one is considered like a hurricane.
Yeah. Yes, it's a bit on your, uh, CD.
No, how, how were the high winds from that hurricane last August fourth, Isaiah, Isaiah's where?
Isaiah's or the.
Isaiah's.
Yeah. Hurricane last August fourth, Isaiah, Isaiah's where? Isaiah's or the.
Isaiah's.
Yeah. Yeah, with a, with a flag on it. It was one-fifty with a flag on it, so you're talking, you know, nine hundred dollars difference. So it would, it'd be one-twenty with two flags, but it would be a four by six flag and a five by eight flag about it.
And that's the size that you recommended at the last meeting, five by eight for the American flag.
Well, if we're flying a, just an American flag, it can be a six by ten, they can all hold.
Oh, with two, it comes down.
If we're going to do the Unionville flag, then we have to knock it down a little bit.
Yeah, it worked out to be, um, three sixteenths versus quarter inch on the Wolf.
How much, eighty-seven?
Can I say, I thought it was around nine, so, I'm sure the one-twenty is more than adequate?
Yeah.
I, I, you know, my roof is, uh, they told us it was guaranteed up to one-twenty, so if my roof goes, that pole's going.
You know, the other thing is too, when, I mean, these storms don't just pop out of thin air, we know they're coming, we can take the flags down. And, and that puts us at minimum risk.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, the only other thing that we had as an option was one of the companies also sold, like, solar tops, like, one of the, put a light on it or one of the solar bottom on.
Well, are we getting, we're going to have some sort of uplighting, right?
Well, we talked about that and then hooking up with the solar, solar, the solar farm, see if that was.
But we'd have to provide the gadget, I'm sure.
For the link in, well, yeah, we have to see if they would allow it to link in.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I think we'd barely be, like, you know, flush the door.
So a little use.
Use a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we, you know.
Well, thanks for doing all that research.
So that's where we're at. So 3,600, and that includes the freight and six-by-10 flag or basically 4,500, which that included is actually two flags.
Oh, it included the two flags?
Yeah.
Does that one include freight as well?
Yeah, that's everything included.
So, you know, I'm kind of in agreement, John, you know, that 120 is probably good enough.
Yeah.
So you feel comfortable with that one?
Yeah, I mean-
So why don't you make a motion that we vote on that? Why don't you start with that?
I'll make a motion. We vote on Liberty Flagpole Company, 35-foot internal halyard. You know, as they described in the quote, $3,600, which includes the freight and the six-by-10 flag. Three to four weeks, three times.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion about that? All right, all in favor of Councilman Welsh, I mean, Councilman?
Derland's.
Derland's motion and the $3,600 flag, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody's in favor. Fantastic.
All right. Thanks, Kevin.
That's going to look great. Thank you for doing all that work. That's wonderful. All right, so then if you don't mind letting, you know, at the resident, when we have our regular meeting, you'll present what we're going with and that we voted on it tonight. And, but the order will be in and it'll be on the way already. Yeah, you know, you talk about the, and we have this nice one, which we probably wouldn't want to hang out because it's a handsome, but we need to have, Dennis Dunning had done some computer images of where he took the seal and superimposed it on, and then he could have that made. You know what? We'll have to get, we'll send those around and it would look more like this. It could be this on a white rectangle.
Yeah.
Or if you had some, you have to look at it and then you decide if you want to make some suggestions. He could, he could adjust things. But I mean, it would be the seal because we don't really have a town flag. So we use our seal on fabric to become a flag. This one is kind of neat, but look at this one, looks like a maid. We could get him to put town of Unionville on the top like this.
Yeah, yeah, we're working on that.
What size is that? What size? Probably, probably, probably a five.
Is it four?
Five, it's more, maybe. Those things are rare enough.
Probably four, it was only five. I mean, we could have him emulate that with an actual computer-
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Rendition, what town of Unionville at the top and then 18th, but then it'd be a little redundant because of that, but it is there too.
Or we could be like the governor and put our faces on them.
Oh, that would go over really good. All right, so we'll, we'll send Dennis's rendering around and everybody can comment on that.
Yeah.
Great. My God, this is very exciting because I think people are going to like that. I think Bob Ritter is going to be thrilled, the resident who came.
Well, fuck the solar company too.
Maybe get a second one for me.
Yeah.
50th anniversary celebration.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice. That'd be great. We only have one out in front. Oh, we have one down at the park. So where would you want to put it?
Up front.
A bigger one? Ken Andrews came by. I told you this, I think.
Yeah, about the wooden sign?
Yeah, he was out taking pictures of the wooden sign out front. You know, the old wooden sign that says Town Hall and it-
One of the gray ships.
It's kind of cute. It's cute, but the white paint is fading off of it and everything. And so we've talked about it before. I kept telling him, "Jake, why don't, can't somebody paint that sign?" You know, because it's so faded. And he said it was a big deal and he made it. They got yelled at for tampering it, with it a few years ago, so they don't ever touch the sign unless they're told to. So I said, "We got to do something about the sign." Ken Andrews is out there taking pictures. He's going to, he's trying to get people to pay to have that sign fixed for us. And I think he was going back to the, to the gray.
There's still money in there.
Yeah, in that account. So he said, "We got to fix the sign. This looks so old." So that would be nice. We can-
Yeah.
And then maybe put a flagpole around that. So. All right, you presented this at the meeting. That's a fantastic thing. And Kevin, to your point, I wrote down here to talk to the solar company.
Yeah, get them on board.
Yeah, because we're in all these conversations with them about the outstanding items will be perfect. So I'll let you know what they say. I hope they hurry. But that's all that I have. Does anybody have anything else that you'd like to have on the agenda? Otherwise, this is going to be it, the things that we reviewed. If, if, well, I think John Donegan, the representative from Optimum, will be here. I'm confirming with him. He promised. If he's here, I think that's going to take a few minutes. I think that's going to be a while because people are going to want to talk to him and we're going to encourage residents to talk to him.
Yeah, I was going to say, "Could you let us know ahead of time?" Because I have a few people that would definitely-
Would love to be on. And we have that book of complaints that he dealt with. But I'm going to, I'm going to call him tomorrow and Monday until I reach him and just say, "Just want to make sure, you know," he did have it on his calendar. I checked with him last month. So.
So it'll be the 17th?
Yeah. Is that our next, that's our meeting, right? 7:30. And like we've, we've been doing with all of our special presentations, yes, definitely the 17th. And we would put him on first as a special present, so that, you know, people could hear him. He could talk and then people could ask questions after. So anyway, I think this is enough for that meeting, given we're going to have a special presentation with somebody who people may really want to talk to. So if you think of anything else that you're, that I've forgotten, let me, email me and I'll put it on the agenda, okay?
Okay.
All right, but otherwise, that's a, it's going to be a lot going on at that meeting. And that's it. That's all I have, gentlemen. Anybody else have anything? Clerk Casey, do you have anything you want on the agenda? You're good? All right. There you go. Thank you. And that's it. Okay. Well, um, we didn't, well, we did officially open it, so we should officially close it. You want to move for-
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. We are adjourning. Thank you, everybody, for being here and for attending. Good night.